Just for two Dela Sandos for having us come. And I hope you enjoyed the pizza. So I know you all know that this is Randall Fowler. We're very thankful that he was willing to run for city council. Hey, it's one. Hey, where are you? Okay, okay. Thank you for plowing him out in Milo. Wherever he is, he's coming home dirty for sure. So thank you guys. I will give the mic to you, Randall. Thank you so much.
So Johnny, thank you so much for opening up Dela Sandos. So I expect you all to be here tomorrow night, the next night, the next night, the next night. Let's just keep panning forward. Thank you so much. Debbie and Libby, thank you so much for saying not tonight and putting this all together. And Olga as well. And Jeff, thank you so much for putting everything together out here. And thank you for everybody coming out, everybody coming out tonight. You know, as Debbie said, so as you know, my name is Randall Fowler and I am running for the at-large seat on Greenville City Council. So here in the city, just a little brief overview, we've got four districts here in our city. Four districts that each have their own area, 1, 2, 3, 4, north, south, east, and west. But we've got two seats on city council that are at-large. And they cover the entire city. And it's their job and responsibility to represent the entire city. And one of those positions, one of those seats is up for reelection this year. And that is currently held by a Democrat and that person beat George Fletcher four years ago. Four years ago, she beat George Fletcher and flipped the city council from a Republican majority to a Democrat majority. Now, when we look back at that election, we can say, you know, was that the city turning a certain color? Was that a big change within the city? Well, we know going back four years, there was really only one seat up for reelection. So out of the 55,000 individuals that lived in the city that could vote, less than 10,000 actually showed up. So this is clearly not a mandate in the city to change directions and go one place. This was more of a vote of, as we all know within the city, who do I know? And we had one person who was campaigning on the fear of 5G. And we had another person that was campaigning on infrastructure. And that resonated here in the city. But over the past four years, I've had the opportunity to talk to a lot of individuals who are stakeholders in the city that looked and said, yeah, four years ago, I voted for this Democratic candidate. Four years ago, I voted for somebody who told me, yeah, I'm a Democrat, but I'm a moderate Democrat. You can trust me. You can trust me. I'm not gonna do anything outlandish. I'm gonna do everything that's in line with what we all believe. And over the past four years, not from me saying this, but from them saying this, they said, the person that I trusted has now gone a completely different direction. A completely different direction where now they're pushing for high-density housing in neighborhoods that were not designed for this. That they're trying to develop a 15-minute city by saying, we're gonna develop these nodes in our communities that you don't have to leave your community. That you're gonna walk everywhere. You're not gonna have your car. We're gonna emphasize public transportation. And it was this idea that they started putting out, not when they ran, but after they got their seat, that individuals started reaching out saying, we don't like this. We don't trust this. And so for me though, that was not the starting point. For me though, the starting point for what caused me to run for this started right behind the building over here. So there's an empty lot on the other side of this building. About a year ago in October, a developer went to the Board of Zoning Appeals and said, I would like to build a storage facility right there. Now, the city said, don't build it there. The city experts said, do not build it there. The Wade Hampton Development Plan said, don't build it there. Me and about 20 other individuals, Debbie was there, Joe Farmer was there, a large group of individuals were there saying, we don't want this. Even our own city councilperson, John DeWorke, came out in the newspaper and said, we don't want another storage facility. But the funny thing about this unelected board was the developer of that storage facility was sitting on that board. And so that should have been the first red flag. And then they opened it up to a vote and you'll never guess what happened. They voted to approve it unanimously. And so I was furious about this. And I went home and I couldn't sleep. And I called up John DeWorke and said, John, what can we do? How do we stop? He said, come to city council. Come to city council. You talk to Knox about this and we're gonna stop this. I said, you got it. And so I prepared all day for my three minutes. Three minutes on the microphone, I said, I've got this. I've got it. It'd be perfect. And I crafted this perfect message and I edited it all throughout the day. I was really unproductive at work that night. I did nothing productive. But I had a great three minutes and I get up there and I launch into my speech. And then the mayor looked at the city attorney and said, we've gotta stop this. There's gotta be something we can do to stop this. And she looked at him with the confidence of a city attorney and said, I know what we can do. We can sue ourselves. And a light bulb went off. Or I said, wait a second. You mean to tell me that we've got an unelected board that has more power in our city than our mayor, than our city council, than our city manager? But yet, we've got a developer that sits on that board that's profiting from this. And the only way to stop this, and it's not even a guarantee, but the only way to potentially even slow this down is to do what? Spend tens of thousands of dollars to sue ourselves. That to me said, there's gotta be something wrong here. And so just like anything else, if you say there's something wrong, well, what else is going on in our city? And as a parent, and my son, as Debbie said, is getting very dirty up here behind me. He was in elementary school and I said, well, what's the city doing for our schools? Well, a little bit inside the city here, the city, it's their job to approve the police department's budget. And the city police department said, we need 30 new police officers for a lot of different reasons. Our city's growing. Anytime we have an event downtown, the downtown population triples. So we need 30 new police officers. And our city council said, you need 30? Great. We'll give you 10. And they said, okay, well, what are we gonna do with the 10? Well, we need school resource officers. So we're gonna put two school resource officers at every high school, one at every middle school. But at the elementary school level, we're gonna have one school resource officer for every three schools. Leaving our most vulnerable population wide open. Now unfortunately, we can go back just a little ways in the news and we can see what happened in Nashville to school shooting, elementary school. Uvalde, school shooting. Go back to Sandy Hook, elementary school shooting. This is not hidden news. This is headline news. We hear about it all the time. But yet, our city said, you know what? We're not gonna put school resource officers every year. We're just gonna put one for every three schools. And this is such an issue that the governor down in Columbia looked at the city and said, you're not doing enough. And forced $1.6 million up to the city. They said, you need more school resource officers. Put more police officers at the school. So if Columbia can see that we have a problem and our own city council is not recognizing this, this says that our city council is entirely out of touch. Entirely out of touch. And so Debbie and Tim took me and my wife out to dinner and really put the heart to rest in this. Said, hey, we know there's some things wrong up there. And we talked about these things and they were great. They said, I think you should run. Think you should run. And my amazing wife over here on a little vacation, I said, I don't know. What do you think? Should we do it? And she was guns ablaze and said, yes, let's do it. Let's do it. So for the past eight months, with all of your help, especially Debbie and Tim telling, we've been going throughout the city. And every single door that I knock on, when I bring these things up, that we have unelected boards changing the nature of our neighborhoods, that we have schools that are not protected adequately. And even bigger than that, that we're growing in a way that is completely unresponsible. That we're pushing for high-density housing downtown throughout neighborhoods, but we're not building new roads. Increasing traffic, increasing congestion. When I bring all this up, every single person I talk to says, yeah, these are big problems. We gotta solve these things. We've gotta solve. Not one person has said, those aren't real problems. Those aren't real problems. Now, what does that look like on November 7th on Election Day? But we hope that it's 51% of the people coming out and agreeing with us. But we know definitively this, that we've got 55,000 people in the city. 55,000 people in the city. We have 55,000 opportunities to flip this the other way. We've had a city councilperson that for the past four years has prioritized the identity politics of today over safety at our schools. Who is pushed for an ideological city driven in a direction that does not align with our values, that is not aligned with the way that we think here in the city. And is pushing and is advocating to become mayor. And if we don't do something in this election, next year, as she literally sits on $80,000 that she's refusing to spend, that she is getting ready to do a full court press because as the Greenville Democratic Party has said very openly in all of their rallies recently, if you can flip Greenville blue, then we can take the state. That is what we're up against this election. We have 14 days to do this. 14 days from today, we have the opportunity to flip this around. We have the opportunity to correct the mistake that happened four years ago. And so the big charge tonight, as we all know, early voting is going on right now and it's gonna go on until next Friday. Election Day is in 14 days on November 7th. I know you're all gonna vote. Even those of you who don't live here are gonna vote. Just don't tell anybody. Just kidding. Just kidding. We're not gonna steal the election. But what I do want you to do is when you leave here tonight, think of five people. Just think of five people, not 100, just think of five individuals that live in the city that would say, you know what? I care that we're being run by unelected boards, that we don't have a voice in the city. I care that our schools are not protected. And I care that the city is not growing responsibly. So we need to change that. Think of five people that you would say would agree with that. And then encourage them that they have a choice. They have a choice on November 7th. As the buttons say, they have the right choice on November 7th. So I encourage you all, tell your friends, five people. And on November 7th, I look forward to partying with you all and having a wonderful election night. Thank you all for coming out. November 7th, let's flip it around.
So we'll open up two questions if anyone has any questions for Randall.
So Randall, I made the same comment at the Post and Courier Croc Center's, you know, event that they had last year to talk about, you know, responsible growth, you know? So anyway, I said, you know, I grew up in a housing project. And I said, we had public transportation, we're close to stores, but everybody wanted to get out. People wanted a single-family home and they wanted their own cars. So I just wanted to make that comment because these people, to your point, there's so many of them seem so out of touch with what I hear people saying, you know? And so this dream of, you know, these nodes and, you know, never having to walk, that's not what a lot of people want. The other thing regarding, you mentioned something about Dorothy and public transportation. And that resonated with me because I didn't get my first part till I was in my twenties. And so we rely on public transportation, but what I see is a lot of empty buses. Has anybody, so it's like, I don't know why we wanna emulate New York and Chicago and all these places that people are fleeing. Do people ever look at these smaller buses? Because the most efficient buses in the world are at the rental car facility. And they're always shortened, you know, smaller buses, I think that would be easier to drive. So if you're elected, if you have an opportunity to relook at public transportation and make it something that would be, buses could run more often, they would be more convenient.
So you're 100% right, Vaughn. So, I don't know, it was probably three months ago. I spent the day riding all the GreenLink buses. And I rode just about every route that I could. And I can tell you for a fact, maybe one time on all those routes was a bus half-full. Maybe. And that's a problem. Now, do we need public transportation? Yes, we need it. No one's advocating we're getting rid of the buses. But are we running them effectively? Well, my opponent was the city council liaison to GreenLink. $20 million budget shortfall that she oversold. A $20 million budget shortfall. So going back to how we're spending money, are we doing this responsibly? I would say absolutely not. Absolutely not. And at our previous debate, my opponent said, well, I disagree with those numbers, but we'll talk about them later. I said, no, 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 we can talk about them now. I have no problem. You don't have to disagree with it. They're not my numbers. I didn't make them up. In fact, the very conservative Greenville News, that was a good one. Put it up on their headline. They said, GreenLink, $20 million budget shortfall. So you're 100% right. Are they being run efficiently? Absolutely not. But what we're also seeing is, when it comes to GreenLink, we're seeing that we're losing individuals. We're losing drivers. We're losing mechanics. Because the city is prioritizing these nodes more than they're prioritizing the actual service that people need and the neighborhoods need. And so when the push is to get bigger and bigger buses and when the push is for the city to invest in Proterra, which declared bankruptcy, then we have to look and say, we're spending money the wrong way. We're doing this inefficiently. What other questions? Which turn? They know what they're doing. It's intentional. I would just say, outrunning, what's the first thing you wanna get accomplished? Well, so as I've been very consistent about this, the first thing I will do is I will say thank you to every single person who voted for me because no way is this a one-person thing. The second is to reform and restructure our unelected boards. It is a city issue right now, but as we all know, this is not just in the city. This goes to the county, this goes to the state, and it really goes to a national level too. We have individuals that are non-elected, that they cannot be held accountable. And they're able to make decisions that impact our daily lives. That's the first thing. In the first debate, I very publicly said, we can change this. We can stop this. And my opponent said, you know, what happened over here was a tragedy, but there's really nothing we can do to stop it. Which is what we call a lie. It's not true at all. There's a lie. In fact, Columbia had this very same issue. And they challenged it and they changed it. You know, these boards didn't just spring up organically. Someone thought, we're gonna have these boards and we're gonna give them this power. They thought that, they put it in place, and they stepped away. And I talked to a former city councilperson. I said, why is it this way? How come the city council doesn't wanna step up to this responsibility? He said, I'll give you two reasons why. I'll give you the nice reason and I'll give you the cynical reason. I said, okay, give me the nice reason. I'm a nice person. Let's hear the nice. He said, city council is so busy, so, so busy, that they can't handle all these requests. And I said, that is? Yeah, they're very busy. They can't, you know, every fence that needs to be moved, they don't even do that. I said, but what's the cynical reason? They said, cynical reason? Wow. City council doesn't wanna have to take responsibility because either one, they're gonna get the developers who give them money mad, or two, they're gonna get the voters who vote on these issues mad. This way, they can just point at these boards and say, no, it's the boards. The boards are the ones who do it. And so the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna reform and we're gonna restructure our local boards. So that while they can make a decision, if there's a decision that goes against city or neighborhood plans, it automatically goes to city council where the individuals we can hold accountable will have to make a choice.
So as far as culture in the city of Greenville, rapidly changing with the influx of Northerners like me. If you had been elected... Can you hear me? Okay. If you had been elected, Randall, would we have spent $30 million taxpayers' dollars on an LGBTQ pride day in Greenville?
No. But as somebody who is married to a very beautiful Northerner, I would allow at least one Northerner down here. Oh yeah, well, I'm not married, Debbie. Debbie's ever pretty good too.
But Randall, how many votes would it take on city council to, how many votes would it take on city council to elect the change in boards? And would you expect, you know, hopefully to get the support of other Republicans and not have the problem that Stan has on county council?
Stan, you don't have any problems on county council, do you? So yeah, so this is a pivotal seat because this would be a four Republicans versus three Democrats. So we already have one Republican who, I will not name, but we have one Republican who has texted and reached out and is very upset about the storage facility. They're also upset, if you're up here on Rutherford Road, the boarding houses that they have approved. Yes, you're that right. Boarding houses that they have approved. I will go so far as to say this. The mayor's opponent, her husband, after the second debate, reached out to me and said, you are spot on about these boards. We've got to change this. So I am very confident that, one, we will have a Republican majority that will vote in favor of this. But we've also got Democrats on the board who see this as an issue too. Unfortunately, there's one Democrat I'm running against that thinks this is perfectly fine.
Randall, I know that you're a citizen like me who's just gotten fed up with a lot of things. And you got talked into running and we are all very grateful for the sacrifice that your family's made. And I think you're highly electable and you're a great candidate. You're exactly the kind of person that I wanna see stepping up as a citizen candidate. So I'm wondering, when you get elected, what can you or we do to encourage more people like you to step up and serve on a board or a commission or a council or whatever it is? There's a lot of ways to participate without a large commitment, but it makes a difference. So what can we do to get more people to do what you've done, but maybe on a smaller scale?
Great question. So I will say first, everyone should run for public office at some point in time. I mean that sincerely because knocking on doors throughout the city has been one of the most enlightening things. You hear what everyone cares about. You know, it's one thing if you just read the news or you go to a city council meeting or you're gonna hear certain things. But when you go throughout the city and you can talk to people, you will hear about every curb and every pothole that people are angry about. So number one, I would say, if you wanna get involved, run for something. Run for any public office. But when I answer your question, Debbie, Libby. So one, we've got boards throughout the city. We've got boards throughout the city that are packed with individuals that have a vested interest in what happens. As I said, the Board of Zoning Appeals had a developer who's developing the storage facility on that actual board. So we had individuals in there and how they're getting on there is they are pestering and they are donating and they are patronizing our current office holders and saying, I need to be on this board. I need to be on this board. I need to be on this board. And they not only have a loud voice, they also have a lot of money behind them. And so we need to pack these boards. And it's one thing just to submit an application. You know, unfortunately, we know that the city council, the city officials are gonna make their own decisions. But when we can inundate them, if we have one person that is gonna go up on a board, then it is the job of all of us to come together and say, we're gonna support them. We're gonna call, we're gonna email our city council people. We're gonna reach out to the people who are making the decisions at the actual city level. You know, go online, look at the boards. Maybe the downtown airport board, for instance, is always in need. And they consistently have the same individuals that are running that. And they're good people. I'm not saying these are bad people. But when you have the same individuals in there, you're gonna get the same results. Find the board that interests you. Maybe you care about the designer report. If you've driven down Academy and you see that hideous, hideous chessboard, the McLaren, the design review board looked at that and the design review board approved that. But the design review board said, we only saw the front entrance. We didn't see the backside. Now that to me is a failure of a board. And when we have individuals that look and say, I care about the city. I don't care about profiting off something. Those are the things that we need. So go online to the city's website, find the boards that matter to you. And then tell everyone. Tell everyone that you're gonna be on the board. And then it's up to all of us to support you. It's up to all of us to call, email, text, hound our representatives on city council and in the city government to say, this person needs to be on there. Because pretty soon, the developers, if they have their way, are gonna fill every board. And they're gonna be able to make every decision on behalf of the city. And our voice will be lost, just like mine was lost there. Our voice will be lost. So we need, number one, people to step up. These are not jobs that are gonna be too big, gonna be overwhelming. And I think there's some boards, as I was mentioning earlier, performance on the board. I think we can shorten the term. Not all the boards have to be four years. We can have a two-year commitment. We can have a shorter group on a board, a smaller group on a board. And those are some of the changes we can make to actually get individuals on the board. Stan's in Lucas, County Council.
First of all, I just wanna say, let's get Randall. Randall, kudos to you for stepping up. And let me, so let's talk a minute. I'm gonna talk about the boards because you've been pretty steady. So I wanna be clear, on city council, city elects, you pick the board members.
A segment of it, not the entire.
All right. But yeah, I mean, they made some county boards and I made their witness. But you, as councillors, pick those boards. So that's why y'all, it's more than important that we vote for Randall and get Randall in. It's because, see, what happens is, we get to interview those potential board members. So we get to ask them. And you know, I get to ask them questions like, who did you support as president? So when somebody tells me Biden, I'm not real crazy about electing that person to be on the board. So we need Randall on that board to make sure that we get the conservatives on there. And I see people in here that have run for the boards, which has been fantastic. So the question is, answer that is, we need him to run, Randall. We gotta encourage him, just like you're doing. And that's a great job. We gotta get him on these boards because let me tell you, these boards, to Randall's point, have a lot of power. So let's keep doing what we're doing. Let's get Randall elected this coming in 14 days. Like he said, I love your call to action, five people. I started thinking, man, I need to call five people myself. I need to call 10 people. But we're for you. You're doing a great job. Your wife, we encourage you. We love you. Thank you for what you're doing. Your kids. It's a big commitment, as you all know. It takes encouragement. Give Randall prayer when you're at home and you're not thinking about, when you're, whatever you're doing, pray for political leaders, especially the ones that are voting right. Because the ones that are voting right, we really don't have a lot of friends other than our, these people here. You know, when we get out of here, there's not a lot of people out there. I mean, I don't know why, but somehow we do have them, but they're just not as vocal as the others, right? So anyway, prayer for Randall. Y'all make sure for the next 14 days, everybody in here, put it to prayer that the Lord will open the door for Randall and his family. Because we need him on city council. We need to get rid of all the woke that's going on in Greenville County and the city of Greenville. We need conservative, traditional values back in our, our city and county. We need, we need, we just don't need what's going on right now. We don't need all the affordable housing. There's other ways to do affordable housing. I don't wanna anyway get into all that. But Randall, we're supporting you. We love you. We're praying for you. And good luck.
I just wanted to say real quick, so about these boards. We need people that are outside of, how can I say? Yeah, outside of the inside. Tim and I will never get on a board. Because they know we're conservative and they know how we think about things. Tim just applied for the Board of Zoning Appeals. So he first said he wanted to apply for the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I said, you'd be better off running for city council because you're never gonna get on there. You're never gonna get on that board because you've been showing up to these board meetings and they know you're not happy. You're better off running for city council. Thank God, you did. So they just, the city just elected some boards last night. Tim applied for two boards and we just got a message today that, you know, he didn't get on the board. Of course, they didn't get on the board. So we need people that are outside of the GOP, that are, you know, running, doing things publicly. We need the average citizen to apply for these boards because they don't know who you are.
Now listen, listen on the board, let me say this. Run for the board. Run again if you don't get elected. Run again if you don't get elected. Run again if you don't get elected. Because you will get elected if you stay consistent. So don't give up. We need, we need political leaders like Randall, but we need board members. So get on a board. Go run and keep running. Run again. Don't get your feelings hurt. Run again.
I just wanna say again, you can find the people that are appropriate for these boards just by keeping your eyes and ears open. If you go to a neighborhood meeting about a project that might be getting permitted, that everybody's angry about, pay attention to who's sitting there. Because they got up off their sofa and they went to a meeting. They already care. So that's the perfect kind of person to approach about serving. Might be the arts board. It might be the airport board. Could even get their feet wet on the Springwood Cemetery board. But the point is, I think most of the boards only meet once a month. So it's not a huge commitment, but it can make a huge difference. If we just start getting our neighborhoods, look for who's the best person that might have an expertise or a passion and just let them know, hey, are you aware? There's this board opportunity.
I wanna say something, but I will. So we have maybe two weeks left in the election. So getting on boards are great. Number one thing is to get out into the neighborhoods. Knock on doors in your own neighborhoods. And you know, I was in Parkins Mill yesterday. There's, there must be a million Knox White signs. Those are opportunities for us to go in, knock on a door, say, hey, how about a Randall Fowler sign? He just needs a little name recognition. And you know, in this town, you may be a fan of Knox White. You may not be a fan of, you know, our side of it anyway. So it's kinda funny that way. But talk to your friends. Talk to your neighbors. Get out there. You know, Debbie is in charge of all the volunteer efforts, getting people on board to go out and knock on doors. And it's not that scary. And if she can get me out to do that, trust me. I spent a career having other people do that for me. Now I have to do it, but, you know, it's a great time. You have a lot of fun. So let's get out and spread the word.
Stan, you have any questions? I feel like you should have a, you're mulling around.
He's a developer.
Okay, Mark.
Randall, do you have any visibility into that $20 million overrun on where actually what was, what comprised that? You know, for the most part, and perhaps how that should look differently and probably relates to some of what you already said, but you have any more to share about that?
Yeah, so one of the things, so after I made this kind of public stink about my opponent overseeing the $20 million budget shortfall, I very quickly got some people reaching out to me that may have been influenced by her, maybe not. I don't want to say definitively, but said, "No, no, there's a reason for this $20 million budget shortfall." And they proceeded to explain what the word inflation meant to me and they said, "It's just inflation, just inflation, you know? Covid happened and this happened and this and this." And they said, "Oh, it's just inflation, just inflation." In reality, what it was, was the transportation department was expanding. And they were expanding in a way that was very aggressive, expanding in a way that did not align with their actual budget. But when they made this public plan of, "This is how we're going to expand. We're going to expand into West Greenville. We're going to build a big hub in a neighborhood that was not designed for it." And those neighbors got mad about it and spoke out about it. They said, "Well, we still got to do this anyway." And so they still pushed forward with it. So their budget said, "This is the, this is the level we're at." They pushed forward and said, "Because we've made such a big deal about this, we're still going to put this hub in here. And we're still going to spend, 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 but we're going to blame it on inflation." I'm sorry, inflation doesn't double in two years to the point where we have a $20 million budget shortfall. That just doesn't make sense. This was just poor planning fundamentally. And what they did is they said, "Because we've committed this already, we're just going to find that money somewhere else in the budget." So what, anybody know what the city budget is, operating budget? It's $267 million. $267 million. We've got a lot of money in our city budget. Whenever we don't have money for something, it's not because we literally do not have money. It is because we have not prioritized things. So whenever we hear, "We don't have money for those 30 police officers," it's, "No, no, 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 no. We have $267 million. We're just choosing not to fund the right things." We have a police department that's K-9, the K-9 unit of our police department, literally goes out and asks for donations. Ask for donations. This is the city of Greenville, South Carolina. $267 million and our police department is asking for donations. That should not be that way, but instead, we're using some of that money to cover a budget shortfall that should not be there in the first place.
So I do have a question. Let me be the devil's advocate. We've lived in Greenville a long time. We've seen a lot of changes. We've, we predominantly live in the West End. So if anybody that has been in Greenville for a while knows the changes that have occurred there. Growth organically brings a lot of challenges. So you've, you've named a few of the highlights and I, and I hear you. There's nothing you've said that I disagree with.
Thank you. I'll take the mic.
But the truth remains, there are challenges that need to be addressed. And so I would like to hear more so about things that we can all agree with. What, how are you going to address the issues that people don't agree with? The node development. When we go to Atlanta, Atlanta has a node development. I mean, honestly, on the surface, I'm not sure what's bad about that. You could probably educate me and I'm willing to learn. But at the same time, how are you going to manage the growth that has happened? Property values have just gone through the roof. I mean, 25 years ago, I was buying dirt for a dollar and 10 cents a foot that now sells for $40 a foot. So if you would, talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, happily. So one of the things, and I'm glad you brought up the idea of growth and specifically organic growth. Organic growth happens and that's a good thing. Forced organic growth, or forced, that doesn't make sense. Forced growth is really where my big issue is and how real this is. So very selfishly, let's talk about me. So I work in HR now. I work in HR and part of my job is to find problems and to help people who do not get along work together. It is sometimes very difficult, sometimes very easy. But it always comes to the point of saying that there are two individuals, there are two groups that have diametrically opposing beliefs. But there is an ultimate endpoint of saying, "These two groups want to work together somehow." Prior to this, my job was to build schools. And so I did this throughout the city of Dallas and the Dallas-Fort Worth Metroplex. And what we had to do in that type of situation was, much like you brought up with Atlanta, we had a big city and we had to work with city government, we had to work with community leaders, and then we had to work with property development groups. Three very different groups that had three very different competing priorities. The ultimate goal of each one, or the ultimate goal for me was to get a school built. A school built because, one, we prioritize what neighborhoods wanted more than anything. And I feel like that is where a lot of our city issues and our city problems arise, where we are not prioritizing what the communities want. Secondly, working with the actual city officials, the city officials, their number one goal, and I will be very cynical, but very honest in saying this, was to be reelected. And so whatever decision we made and working with them, the ultimate decision hinged upon, did the people in the community approve of this? And so by understanding what the community wanted, we addressed that need. By understanding what the local officials wanted, which was to be reelected, by making the citizens happy, we addressed that need. The next was to work with our developers. Now, working with developers, this is something that throughout the city is a hot button issue, but I will be as clear as I can on this. We have a lot of good local developers. I don't know them all, but I know some. And I know that our local developers do not look at neighborhoods and see dollar bill signs. They look at neighborhoods they've grown up in, they live in, or they have a current personal investment in. And within that, they're looking and saying, "There's a dynamic of a city. There's a dynamic of a neighborhood that says, 'We're not going to build high-rise apartments in there. We're not going to build high-density housing in there.' But what we are going to do is, we're going to look at the nature of that neighborhood and say, 'What is the need? How can we address that?' Those are the type of partnerships that unfortunately for the past four years, we've seen suffer. I was just meeting with the CEO of a development group last week. And I met with him about a week after my opponent met with him. And he said that she has no idea what she wants. She just doesn't want anything that's not 100% affordable housing. Which in my opinion, does not address a need that the community wants. It does not address a need that the local officials want. And it definitely doesn't address the need that a developer wants. And so through the conversations of understanding, if we can build good positive relationships with our local developers, one, understanding that they know what the community needs as well as we, who live in the community, know what we want, then we're able to build in a way that will adjust, that will, that will address these issues, that will address these problems. Now unfortunately, I cannot see into the future. I don't know all the issues that are going to come up for the next four years. But I can say consistently with my experience as a private citizen and now my experience just running for public office, if we can lead with saying, "What do the neighborhoods want, number one?" And then number two, "How does that benefit the city?", then I think we'll be in a better place. But if we don't prioritize good positive relationships with our local development groups, then our out-of-state development groups that are going to look in and just see dollar bill signs everywhere, are going to run a rough shot over every neighborhood. They're going to give our city council money to get on boards and influence things in a really negative way. And that's what I really want to fight against there.
Okay, so this gentleman made me think of another question. You know, I grew up in Chicago and lived in California 35 years. I do not consider Atlanta a good, I'm sorry, but you know, would you, you know, I would like to have some cities that we would like to model ourselves after and Atlanta would not be.
Could you give a little more clarity around the controversy about the convention center that was during the debate that we had?
So if you're familiar, so we've got the doubt. We've got the county, the convention center down around the airport, but that is far away from downtown. So there is a push to build a conference center in the city. And this is a good idea. There's a big difference between a convention center and a conference center. With this conference center, the city's been gifted, been offered, not been given to us, but has been offered a piece of land that's worth about $25 million. And the holdup in this development is that they couldn't figure out how big the ballroom was going to be. In my opinion, I've never been given $25 million. I definitely have not been given $25 million in the land. But it seems to me that if someone has offered me an incredibly valuable piece of land, that if you have experts in the city, and I will say very clearly, I am not an expert in the city. But we've got brilliant people throughout our city that understand how to build, how to develop, and how to actually draw up plans that we can effectively work together to say, "Let's save the city money by building a conference center." That's going to, number one, we're going to be able to get the art that Bob Jones University has, put it downtown in a way that's going to show that we can actually have good art for the city, that our Arts and Public Spaces committees are not going to overrun us with statues we may or may not want. That we're going to be able to have a good place that we can put art downtown. We're going to be drawing in business. We're going to have a booming economy just from that. And then we're also going to have a convention center that we can work with the county on working out of sale that would benefit the county and would benefit the city. Unfortunately, our current city council was offered $25 million piece of land and they couldn't figure out the square footage and how big to make a ballroom. So that deal is almost nowhere. And so for the past four years, we've been fumbling around with this, fumbling around with this. To me, it's an easy decision. Somebody offers you $25 million of pristine land right on the Greedy River, we can figure out a way to say yes to that.
And there's already a consistent conference center somewhere that you can work off of, right?
Yeah, yeah. This is not going to be the first conference center in the world.
Randall, please.
Sure.
My amigo Federico from Maria, you have a question? By the way, Danielle from Taylor's and Federico from Maria, now understand, after speaking with you, your campaign chairman and Dan, that an R means right and D means done. What's your question?
So we need, we have to wrap it up after your question.
So you brought up like, what are some good cities to model out there? So there's now Atlanta. What about Charlotte or another city maybe?
Can you define affordable housing in Greenville? Can you define affordable housing in Greenville and what it means?
So are you looking for an exact percentage or more philosophically? Yeah, so one, there's a purity test that's going on right now when we say affordable housing that basically says, individuals that, for me, that want the government to build them a place to live, should get this housing. And that is something that my opponent is advocating for in a very, very strong way, which should not be that way. What that does is, yes, right away, my opponent is advocating this, right away, it gives people a place to live. Unfortunately, it empowers our local government to start building homes, which is not, in my opinion, the role of our local government. Number two, it segregates individuals into, you know, projectional housing units that force them to have poor educational opportunities. The kids do not have a good place to go to school. There's food deserts throughout there. If we can partner, so we have the Woven Project, was I think a good example. Woven Project was going to be a mixed-income housing area where because we have partnerships with local developers who already know when they're going to build in the city, that they have a certain number of homes that they're going to go below market rate. They say, "We'll give you this." That to me is good affordable housing, that they're going to say, "Some people can get below market rate, but we're still going to have the opportunity to build and have housing for people at and above market rate." And that way, you're building, bringing people together. You're going to have better educational outcomes. You're going to have better outcomes. You don't have food deserts throughout that. And most importantly, you're removing the role of government to build homes and build high-rises and you're actually empowering neighborhoods to make that decision and partnering with those developers. So that is more of my philosophical idea of affordable housing. Right, yeah. And that's why whenever I say, every developer comes to the table, understanding that there has to be a give and take. No developer comes and says, "It has to be 100% this way." And that's why when I say, I'm having to use this term blank, like very blanket way, because we have no idea, I have no idea, you know, for instance, if we go one block over, how many individuals from that community will be displaced. But by taking that into account, that's a variable that we have to take into account at each place. But when we have the government dictating what that is, that's when we're forcing that into a situation that is not positive for anybody.
Big thank you to Randall, of course. I want to be sure and give a shout out to Delisandros. They're always close and amazing. They open up especially for us tonight. So we're super grateful to have the opportunity to gather here in the neighborhood. That's fantastic. And I want you to know, they have a full, wonderful menu and please check it out before you leave. I guess you saw they have beer and wine and they have live music every other weekend. And the way to check their events is on their website or their Instagram, but their website has their good stage. So it's such a great resource. I came down tonight on my golf cart. You know, you can walk, you can drive, you can golf cart, thumb it. Anyway, it's a great little neighborhood hangout and I really want to encourage everybody to make it part of your new routine. They have driven a lot of other pizza places right out of business. So thank you, Delisandros. Okay, so for anyone that has not opened their wallets, you can do that now. Anyone with that, but I highly encourage you to support Randall also with your paycheck because he's been working really hard and we can use it just to close him out in the next two weeks. So we have a QR code here. You can go to his website and you will also take a check. Okay, thanks for coming so much.
And if you have not, on your way out, please grab a yard sign. Put it in your yard, put it in your neighbor's yard, put it in the people you don't like's yard. There you go. Anywhere where there's grass.
Thank you.